Good morning, everyone. My name is Matthew Gichard. I'm the Chair of the Walnut Creek Chamber of Commerce and Visitors Bureau, and I'm the moderator for this candidate's forum. On behalf of the Chamber, I am pleased to welcome you to our 2020 Walnut Creek City Council Candidates Forum. The Chamber has a long tradition of organizing and conducting these council forums, and I'm pleased to be the moderator. I'm going to give a little special shout out to the staff of the Chamber and the President Jay Hoyer for organizing this forum. A special welcome to the eight candidates who have stepped forward to serve our community. We want to thank you for your interest in representing the citizens of our jewel of a city, Walnut Creek. I'm going to just introduce the candidates at this time. No response needed, just so everyone hears what their names are. And I'm doing it in alphabetical order. Haley Ayers, a concerned citizen. Cindy Darling, an environmental scientist and business person. Luella Haskew, Walnut Creek City Council member and CPA. Curtis Reese, information technology manager. Michael Sampson, teacher, musician. Lauren Talbert, library clerk. Justin Weddle, Walnut Creek Council member. And Kevin Wilk, Walnut Creek Council member, technology executive. For those of you who do not know, the eight candidates are vying for three seats in play this term. There are three incumbents and five citizens who are vying for those three seats. We're pleased to let you know that this candidate forum is being recorded. It's being livestreamed right now on the Chamber Facebook page. It will be on Walnut Creek TV. And you can also go to the Chamber website to view this forum. So for any of you who have friends or family members who missed this morning or missed a part of it, I commend you to look at those various forums and you can see it. We have initiated a random draw of names for each question category. So what we're going to do is start out with a 90-second, excuse me, yes, response. That's your opening statement. And keep in mind, this is a chance for the citizens who are watching to kind of see who you are and what you're about. Then we'll go through a series of questions. Some are 30-second answers, some are one minute. I don't have a hook here to pull any of you off the stage, but I'm just going to ask you kindly to stick with the time. We have a limited amount of time. I want to say two years ago, we had about two hours and five candidates, and it was a squeeze. This year, we have eight candidates and two hours. We do have a very capable timer here, and you will. As soon as you start your question, if it's your answer, excuse me, if it's a 30-second answer, she will start that timer and it will go off. There will be a bell going off. I don't want to step on anyone's toes. In fact, with the Zoom, I can't, but I do want to say, please limit it and end your answers promptly. The series of prepared questions are asked also randomly. So we've randomized all of the various names, so each time they will be different. This year, we're going to be asking the same question of all eight of you. And these are questions that have come from various people in the community, board members of the Chamber, people that are interested in the business here in our community. That buzzer will go off, I'll remind people. I do want to recall what we said earlier is the host is going to ask you, once I ask you a question, to unmute. And please, at that time, unmute, and that is when the timer will start. We are hopeful we can get to audience questions. We've allotted some time for that, so that's another reason why I'd like people to end right on time. We have audience questions that we're anticipating coming in. Last time, we had a number of questions, and I provided those. We had a short period of time. I think we were able to only ask two or three from the audience. But I provided those questions to the candidates the last time so that they could at least see what people in the audience were interested in. And sometimes those are areas that we were not able to get to. We're going to remind you to don't bang on things, as they told me. If I'm angry, I'm not supposed to bang things because it changes the whole Zoom thing. Once we use up to 15 minutes for audience questions, we'll go to closing statements. And again, that's kind of like the opening comments. This is a chance for you to kind of wrap up and say, I will say to everyone, we can never get everything that we want to say in the course of these forums. So understand, this is a good chance for you to give everyone kind of a fresh look at you. I want everyone to relax. This should be fun. Nerves are something that we all have, but take it easy, relax, and let's have some fun this morning. So I'm going to start now with the candidates and their opening comments and their vision for Walnut Creek. And these are, this is a 90-second response, and in random order, we have chosen, excuse me, we have lauterized, this is Justin Weddle. So Justin, unmute yourself and...
Thank you, Matt. Four years ago, I promised a principal platform based on supporting our businesses, prudent financial policies, supporting public safety, and fighting to better our quality of life. It is with great pleasure that I report back to you. Promises made, my promises kept. Yet COVID has clearly changed the trajectory of our business community and the city. We need proven elected officials with a definable track record that can leverage their past success while laying out a clear vision for an even better community. And that is exactly what you get with me. Amongst others, we must reimagine our economic development plan with a long-term vision of diversifying our revenue base while providing a bold vision for driving high-paying jobs to Walnut Creek. We must create more business opportunities by removing regulation and improving zoning, especially in our downtown area, just like I did while leading our successful rezoning changes in the Shavelands. Support our police department while addressing our opportunities for improvement to meet and improve upon our public safety mission and implement the same budget and spending processes that many in our business community implement in order to ensure that the city can continue to provide essential services while improving our quality of life. I look forward to answering the questions from the business community today to provide insight into my accomplishments during the last four years and what I hope to accomplish if reelected. Thank you.
All right, and thank you. And next up, we have Haley. And if you, I'm going to call everyone by their first names from this point forward, just so everyone can relax, and I think that's fine. Haley, you're on.
Fair. So my name's Haley. I was lucky enough to be born and raised here in Walnut Creek. I attended Valley Birdie and Indian Valley Elementary Schools, went to Foot Hill Middle School, and also attended Los Lomas High School. I've played soccer on the fields here at Arbolato and Valley Birdie. I swam in the pools for Woodlands and the W C S C. After high school, I got my bachelor's degree in sociology, so the study of society and people. And then went on afterwards to get my master's in public administration, emphasizing in public policy analysis and public management. At 32 years old, I volunteered at a handful of nonprofits in the area. I graduated from the Chamber of Commerce's own Leadership Contracosta Program, and I spent the last year serving as the youngest of 19 civil grand jury members, investigating, evaluating, and reporting findings and recommendations for local government and district entities and holding them accountable. I hope to show you throughout this forum that my experience, my education, and most importantly, my empathy will make me a worthy candidate of one of the three open seats for city council. And I hope that you will consider that when you go out and vote.
Thank you, Haley. All right, next up is Curtis.
Hello, my name is Curtis Reese. My path to public service is unique amongst everyone running for city council here. It was, unfortunately, it was born out of tragedy when Miles Hall was shot and killed by two police officers here in Walnut Creek during a mental break. And at that point, I was compelled into action and have worked within the system to build relationships and coalitions to ensure that the heartache that that family dealt with would never happen again. After working within that system, I learned that it was, there are other opportunities for me to help and to do good within Walnut Creek. It sparked my enthusiasm to be more involved in the city. My family has lived here in Walnut Creek for 18 years. My wife, Marlena, and I put countless hours in supporting our kids as they swam for the Larky Sharks, Los Lomas football, swimming, water polo, and many other sports. We're active in our church at St. John Biani, volunteer with Boys Team Charity, and also we mentor youth. Walnut Creek is facing many challenges, and from my estimation, that opens the door to a multitude of opportunities. We live in one of the best places in the Bay Area, and I wanted to stay that way. I'm a technology manager. I have my MBA from St. Mary's, and I look forward to today's forum to learning more about what's important to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. All right, Kevin.
Thank you to the Chamber for hosting this important event. During my first term as a Walnut Creek Council member, I've ensured that important civic along with societal issues were addressed consistently and often in Walnut Creek. Locally, I led the effort in bringing free downtown Wi-Fi for everyone. I also led the approval for all city-owned buildings now being powered by 100% clean energy. My involvement meant that we are now updating the Climate Action Plan to take us through 2030 as one of our top priorities. I've been a leader in bringing more arts downtown and approving an outdoor concert stage at the lecture center. And when COVID-19 hit, I formed a Business Leader Roundtable to come up with ideas for helping getting our retail businesses and restaurants on a road to recovery. That led directly to our rebound Walnut Creek Committee. Anna led the council in officially recognizing Pride Month in Walnut Creek and raising the Pride Flag, one of the first in the East Bay. But there are many challenges ahead, and we need to work closely with local businesses to recover from the financial impact of the pandemic while continuing to meet health protocols. We need to respond meaningfully to issues raised by current protests on systemic racism, some of which are already occurring that I've advocated for, like a diversity task force, and proposing a 24/7 mental health crisis response unit. We need to make it easier for companies to provide larger job opportunities for all job sectors locally in order to meet the needs of our next generations and to rely less on lengthy commutes. And we need to have more affordable housing for not only the adults that need it now, but for our children who will also need options on living closer to where they grew up. These are all important issues in Walnut Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
Okay. Hi, my name is Cindy Darling, and I have spent my career in public service. And that's where I learned how to solve problems, balance competing priorities, and manage limited resources. Now I'm a small business owner and a Chamber member, and I've worked with our Chamber to help the economy grow. I spent 10 years on the Planning Commission where I've learned the inner workings of our city. And I also chair the Oversight Committee for the Bay Restoration Authority where I get to help ensure that our tax dollars are being well-spent. I have the skills, the experience, and a fresh perspective. We need to bring our city back together and find solutions that work for everyone because we are facing multiple challenges. As many have mentioned, COVID is shaking up our economy and impacting our small businesses downtown and also our city budget. So we need to work to safely attract visitors to downtown Walnut Creek so that we can get back into fiscal good health. We need to streamline permitting and city services and stay nimble under evolving circumstances. No one knows where this is going. We also need to make sure we continue with the many amenities that we have in our city where we have a city that works for everybody. So we have to partner with our business and community groups to maintain our parks and open space, support our seniors, address homelessness and mental health policing crisis, and make sure that we have a community that is safe for everybody. We also need to make sure our economy works, tackling the jobs, housing balance, encouraging responsible development that provides a place for working families to live. My vision is a city that's safe for everybody, values diversity, and is ready to roar back from these tough times.
Thank you, Cindy.
Hello and good morning, everyone. My name is Lauren Talbert. I've lived and worked in Walnut Creek for my entire life. And over the last five years, I've worked at both Walnut Creek Libraries, first at Ignacio Valley as an aide, and then Downtown Walnut Creek as a clerk. My motivation for running came from the loss of library funding that cost me my job and the fact that I felt like the community hadn't necessarily been heard when it came to library hours. More than anything, I want Walnut Creek to be a city where the people feel heard in all matters, in matters of social justice, in matters of seeing to the homeless crisis because these are people who need our help. And this is a community that is so full of love and can do so much more for people. My priorities as a candidate are to deal with social justice, to bring justice for Miles Hall, to provide more services for the homeless, to take care of our elders, to, oh, Lord, I lost my place. Apologies. To provide more affordable housing for people who want to come into the community and for people like me who have grown in the community and one day want to be able to own a house of my own. I hope that I can answer all of your questions, and y'all all vote for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lauren. Michael.
Hi, everyone. Good morning. My name is Michael Sampson. I am a teacher, a musician, and I've never really had grand political aspirations. I still don't, but I'm running because I do not believe that the current city council has the will, the courage, or the imagination to meet this historic moment. We currently face multiple generation-defining crises at the same time. And so I believe that in order for the United States to meet these crises with its soul intact, that we need to take bold progressive action. And that we can't wait for higher levels of government to take those bold steps. It has to happen at the local level. I was initially motivated to run because I was so disappointed by the city council's response to issues of police brutality, particularly in the use of police violence against Miles Hall and against peaceful protesters. On June 1st, I was one of those protesters. But our campaign's vision for Walnut Creek is far broader than simply making changes to the police department. We will stand with small businesses instead of property owners when it comes to supporting small businesses. I support instituting, for example, a modest vacancy tax on empty commercial properties and diverting the revenue from those funds into small businesses, and so much more in terms of zoning and homeless support, more issues like that. I'm looking forward to getting into it with the further questions.
Thank you, Michael. And Lola. Luella, excuse me.
Thank you, Matt. That's okay. Thank you, Matt, and thank you to the Chamber for sponsoring this forum. You have been a strong influence in our economic success of both your members and our entire community. Some background about me. I am a CPA and the only council member with professional financial background. My clients included large and small businesses, and my service ranged from tax planning to best practices in budgeting and forecasting. My profession and my years of the community involvement have been invaluable to me for my work on the council. I am focused on the impending pension tsunami and how to mitigate the financial burden, the economic benefits of workforce housing, the value of investing to address our homeless challenges, the implementation of our new economic development plan, and the economic value of the arts and the public-private partnership at the new Wester Plaza. I serve on the Board of County Transportation Authority. My work means Walnut Creek has more local funding for roads, for more transportation options for seniors and the disabled, and safer walking and biking options for kids. Just as importantly, my eight years have shown that I am collaborative, and I know how to adjust to the unexpected, and this certainly has been the year for that.
Thank you, Luella. All right, we are going to the prepared questions from me. And again, as I said, we have randomized who's going to go first. And this is a 30-second response. So 30 seconds can sometimes be incredibly long time and sometimes a short time. But I'm just reminding you, this is 30 seconds. We've got our timer going here. So first and foremost, we're going to, Curtis is going to start. And the first question is, what have you done and whom have you contacted to better understand business issues in Walnut Creek?
What have I done? So I've reached out to the Executive Vice President, I believe she is, of Walnut Creek Downtown. I have scheduled meetings with small business owners within downtown's business arena. And I am just going through and doing my best to get educated as quickly as possible on their needs.
All right, thank you. Cindy Darling, I'll ask the question again. What have you done and whom have you contacted to better understand business issues in Walnut Creek?
Well, I'm already a member of the Chamber and participate in the Civic Affairs Committee, so I've got a lot of experience there. I'm also, our company is a member of the East Bay Leadership, so I work with their water task force and their executive board. I began running last fall, so I talked to a number of developers and business owners that I own downtown to find out what they were up to. And then since then, I've reached out to many of our small business owners, and I'm amazed at the grit and determination and vision they have for Walnut Creek.
All right, Justin. What have you done and whom have you contacted to better understand business issues in Walnut Creek?
Thank you for the question. This is a very important expression in the COVID time. I've reached out to the Chamber, including Jay Hoyer, including multiple Chamber Board members, WCD, of course, including Kathy, and multiple business, small business owners. As a small business owner here in Walnut Creek, I know specifically the issues and what small businesses are doing and how they're being affected. On the council level, the council has funded and supported Walnut Creek together in the Walnut Creek Rebound.
Michael. What have you done and whom have you contacted to better understand business issues in Walnut Creek?
So I have, of course, spoken with business owners downtown specifically and asked them about issues that they are dealing with, as well as running these issues through, you know, groups of people who are close to me and understand these issues well. I think the number one thing that impacts small business owners is that the rents for many of the buildings are so high, and I don't believe reflect the actual market rate. So bringing rents down is a topic.
Thank you. Haley. What have you done and whom have you contacted to better understand business issues in Walnut Creek?
Hi, that's a great question. So as an aspiring young entrepreneur and small business owner myself, we are seeing this need for a new creative way to bring more money and community involvement in helping support our small businesses. I have a number of contacts who are small business owners themselves who I've reached out to to see what's working for them, what's not, where the city and the Chamber can help more.
Thank you. Lauren. What have you done and whom have you contacted to better understand business issues in Walnut Creek?
Thank you for the question. I've mostly been talking with small business owners that I know and whose businesses I enjoy in Walnut Creek area. It's been a really big priority for me ever since COVID started to patronize locations that I love and also new locations all through downtown through this entire thing. And so anytime I pop in to pick up takeout, I've just been going, hey, how are you doing? What could be going better and what's going great?
Thank you. Luella. What have you done and whom have you contacted to better understand business issues in Walnut Creek?
Well, to start with, that is my profession. I am a trained CPA. I have been a business advisor for many, many years. And I know how to run the numbers. I know how it is to work under extraordinarily difficult situations. I'm on the rebound committee, and we have talked to all business sectors. And we're trying to find out not only what's happening now, but how to improve in the future.
Thank you. Kevin.
Thanks. Well, as the liaison for the city council with the Chamber of Commerce, I'm familiar with these issues that we continue to talk about every week or two weeks. I'm on the Finance Committee for the city council, and we've been working with what we need to do to help reinvigorate downtown. When COVID-19 hit, the first thing that I did in April was start to work with the Business Roundtable Group, put together about eight different of the top civic leaders in Walnut Creek, figured out ways that we could help to rebound the economy from with outdoor dining, as well as curbside pickup, and a variety of things that we're now seeing actually happening in Downtown Walnut Creek.
Thank you. I can tell everyone's working very hard to keep it within that 30 seconds. I'm going to make it a little more difficult for you right at this point because this is another 30-second question. It really is kind of a yes or no, and it's a two-part question. So the first is, Luella is the first. And this is the question. Given the impact of COVID-19 on local businesses, would you support waiving the business license fees for one year? And the second part of the question, would you support waiving or delaying the collection of the Walnut Creek transient occupant tax to assist local hotels and motels?
Thank you for the topic. And waiving these things will cost the city money. We did postpone them. We have done what we can to make them actually reasonable. And I think in the long run, they are such a small part of our budget that waiving them is actually one of the tools we would use.
Thank you. Let me read the question. Given the impact of COVID-19 on local businesses, would you support waiving the business license fees for one year? And the second part of the question is, would you support waiving or delaying the collection of the Walnut Creek transient occupant tax to assist local hotels, motels?
Yes, given these circumstances, I think that one of the most important things is getting and keeping businesses on their feet. And so I think that in these circumstances, while it might lose the city some money, loss of these businesses or these businesses never opening would be a greater loss.
Thank you. All right, Curtis. Given the impact of COVID-19 on local businesses, would you support waiving the business license fees for one year? The second part of the question is, would you support waiving or delaying the collection of the Walnut Creek transient occupant tax to assist local hotels, motels?
Absolutely, I would support both. I think it's important during this time to do what we can to spread out the pain as evenly as possible. I believe that the city's in a position to absorb that loss in the path to ensuring that these companies or these businesses stay alive because the long-term benefit of their continued revenue far outweighs the benefit of these.
All right, and thank you. Kevin. I'm going to continue to read because I think it's fair. So I'm going to each time read the question. Given the impact of COVID-19 on local businesses, would you support waiving the business license fees for one year? And the second part of the question is, would you support waiving or delaying the collection of the Walnut Creek transient occupant tax to assist local hotels and motels?
Sure. So I certainly can appreciate the difficult challenges that small businesses are having. The business license fee, and as Luella had mentioned, we are at a severe deficit, and we're doing whatever we can to keep things going within the city. The business license fee actually helps to pay for the planning department and being able to help new businesses and be able to upgrade businesses. So it would actually end up being a detriment. On the transit-oriented tax, it's a very small portion. We could certainly waive that, but I don't think it's going to make a big difference to hotels.
Haley. Given the impact of COVID-19 on local businesses, would you support waiving the business license fees for one year? The second part of the question is, would you support waiving or delaying the collection of the Walnut Creek transient occupant tax to assist local hotels and motels?
I do. I support both. For the waiving the business fees, I think we're seeing the way that work is changing for people, for business owners, for people wanting to work from home and start their own business. So I think that getting rid of those barriers and allowing that brings more revenue in the long term to the city in terms of sales tax to help support that. And for the transient occupancy tax as well, I think it's only 2% of our revenue right now. So I think that would help boost the hotels in the area.
And Cindy. Given the impact of COVID-19 on local businesses, would you support waiving the business license fees for one year? Would you support waiving or delaying the collection of the Walnut Creek? Would you support waiving or delaying the collection of the Walnut Creek transient occupant tax to assist local hotels and motels?
I'm going to give you a slight twist on this. My business, we went ahead and paid our business taxes this year because our profits have actually not been impacted by COVID because of the way we operate. So I would favor looking at a business and giving them the opportunity to say what the impact has been on them, waiving it based on that. Hotel tax, that goes to, that comes in relatively minor amounts right now. I would favor putting it aside to run an advertising campaign to boost TOT once we come out of the pandemic rather than sending it off to corporations.
And Michael, given the impact of COVID-19 on local businesses, would you support waiving the business license fees for one year? Would you support waiving or delaying the collection of the Walnut Creek transient occupant tax to assist local hotels, motels?
I would definitely, I would, yes, I would want to waive the business licensing fees, especially for small businesses. Haley alluded to it, things are changing and we need to make sure that we are governing in a way that supports human need, even if it means that we take a slight hit to our revenues. I think it's important that we respond to human need. With regard to the transient occupancy tax, I would need to look into that more and get more feedback from people who know the issue better.
And Justin, given the impact of COVID-19 on local businesses, would you support waiving the business license fees for one year? Would you support waiving or delaying the collection of the Walnut Creek transient occupant tax to assist local hotels and motels?
Well, I'll answer the second one first. As the chamber knows, I'm the only council member that's up for reelection that actually advocated for that position. No matter how small that is to the hotels, how small that amount is, these hotels are struggling to survive. They've seen their occupancy rates drop dramatically and every dollar counts. I cannot stress that enough. Every dollar counts to these businesses. As for the business license fees, I'm more than happy to look into this. I understand that it's a significant cost to some businesses, but it must be offsetting cuts in our budget to offset that, that, that loss of revenue.
Right, thank you. Now we're going to move along. This is a question with a one-minute response, double the time. And it's kind of a fun question. And we're going to start out with Haley. And the question is, if elected, what would you expect to accomplish in the first three months?
That's a great question. I know that in city government, there's not a lot you can do in three months. There are so many things that need addressing. I think immediately it's going to be working with small businesses to help provide job pathways for people looking for work who are jobless right now. It's going to involve getting, starting maybe a small business program, for example, where you get bonus points or something by shopping local and that can provide you discounts later or something. So just finding ways to infuse and revitalize the way that we run small businesses. And then also I know that there's only so much the city government can do, but there is a large movement to reallocate some police funding and see where it can be better spent on homeless services and provide services immediately for the people that need it.
Kevin, if elected, what would you expect to accomplish in the first three months of your term?
Well, the first thing that I would like to do is to really help these downtown businesses, especially the restaurants that are truly struggling at this point. They're barely making ends meet with outdoor dining and the weather is going to be turning in about six weeks. And so we have to figure out how we can help these restaurants to, even though they can, they continue to, continue to do outdoor dining through January, it's going to be cold and windy, windy and rainy. And so what can we do to help these businesses continue to survive? We also need to continue to have these important discussions regarding social justice and systemic racism. I am proud that I'll be helping to chair, along with a fellow council member, Matt Francois, the anti-bias and diversity task force that will be having applications coming out in the next couple of weeks. And we'll also be able to see this training through to our, to our team that our staff employees of Walnut Creek right now. And then of course, we have to be able to open up the businesses, taking COVID-19 into, into account and ensuring that we open up.
All right. Lauren, if elected, what would you expect to accomplish in the first three months?
Nothing for the question. As it's been said, three months isn't a lot of time to get things done in local politics. But there really should be a focus on businesses, on helping businesses. Currently, I know a big struggle for restaurants is just how exorbitant delivery fees are. And so that's, that's something I know is being worked on and that is something I would like to continue to work on if it's not a matter that has been settled. Again, social justice is another thing that I would like to be able to deal with straight out the gate, get things moving as fast as possible. The reallocation of police funds would really help a lot of other struggling areas. And so that is something that I would really like to look into as soon as I get into the council.
Thank you. All right. Luella, if elected, what would you expect to accomplish in the first three months?
Our, to bring our, sorry. First goal is to bring our city into the red zone, our county into the red zone. So we do have opportunities to open up restaurants to 25% capacity and we can start to work back into normal situations. Of course, I was the person that's recommended the diversity tax for us and I am excited that Kevin and Matt Francois are going to lead it. They're great leaders. I also am looking forward to further leading the county's participation in improved, in improved mental health response. It's going to take a team of lots of cities and we've already started the work. And I am very proud that I was, I am the person that led that charge.
Thank you. Justin, if elected, what would you expect to accomplish in the first three months?
So I'm not going to lie to anyone on this call. Nothing gets done or completed in three months in government. But there's three specific areas in which I think I would continue to focus on and hopefully drive change. The first is the, the continue to work on the rebound program and the, the issues affecting our businesses with COVID. Mayor Haskew hit it right on the, the head about addressing our, our COVID response and ensuring that our community is safe and that we're driving down the individuals that are unfortunately getting COVID and, and those that are unfortunately passing away. Continue to, to work on the issues brought up by our social unrest and FOSAF, something I am proud to say I've taken a leadership role in addressing on the public safety subcommittee and driving change from that, from that perspective. And then lastly, with the COVID downturn, we must finally focus on our budget. With the loss of sales tax revenue and other revenues, we must finally implement the long-term changes that I've been advocating for during my terms in office. Failure to do so will just continue to perpetuate the issues that we're facing today.
All right. Cindy, if elected, what would you expect to accomplish in the first three months?
Well, winter is coming and so we need to be ready in two respects. One is the downtown businesses. We have to drive them into the red zone. We have to extend the rebound program. We have to make our rebound program consistent with other jurisdictions. We have to help those businesses stay open. Winter is also coming for our homeless population and running homeless shelters in the time of COVID is going to be very challenging. As part of the homeless task force, we've heard the challenges they're going to face with the armory this winter. And something I've always supported on planning commission, we need to be ready for that. On budget, we have the luxury of being fiscally very conservative and we had the reserves to get us through last year and this year. We need to be ready for the next year's budget by following what we're getting as far as sales tax, TOT, other income streams, and then beginning the process of looking at our overall budget and figuring out where we can balance it, where we can make it work. Unlike Justin Widdell, I think I focus more on the high-value, top-level decisions rather than the nitpicky.
All right, Michael, if elected, what would you expect to accomplish in the first three months?
So with three, obviously I'm not going to be here making any promises. But broadly speaking, in the first three months, I would hope to reinvigorate kind of the local political scene. To be frank, most people don't know who sits on their local city council, much less what's going on. So I think making sure that the community is involved in what happens in city council is something I want to spearhead. Also, animating feature of my campaign is that we are fighting for justice for Miles Hall, which includes efforts to take responsibilities and the commensurate funding away from the police and give them to new departments and other departments who can do their jobs better. So for example, 24/7 mental health crisis response is a priority. And I know we're taking some steps towards that, but I want to make sure that that gets all the way through. In addition to homeless response, I don't think the police should be responding to homeless. Whatever money we're spending on the police homeless outreach program, give it to the Trinity Center instead. I would also hope to implement a vacancy tax on empty commercial properties so that we can generate revenue for small businesses.
Right. And Curtis, if elected, what would you expect to accomplish in the first three months?
I think it's already been clearly stated that three months is a very short time to make any major changes, especially if they're new. So I think in the first three months is about, it's about two things. Number one, education. And number two, getting things that are already in flight past the finish line. So in terms of education, I want to educate myself on all aspects of, of running the city and understanding the community as deeply as possible. And also want to ensure that the community is educated about who I am. So the community will know me at that point. And I want to get to a point where they're almost sick of me because I want them to have access to me. Next up is ensuring that items that are in flight, such as implicit bias program, listening meetings that are in flight, the work to enhance, to, to come up with the, as Michael said, the 24-hour response to mental health that's non-police related, I want to ensure that that moves forward. And examining the rebound program to not only extend it, but make sure that it has modifications that are designed to assist with regeneration as opposed to just survival, because we'll get to that point soon.
All right. We're now going to move on to a, a kind of a two-part question again, but make it hard on you because it's going to be a 30-second response, but it's kind of a, one of those yes or no with a little bit of an explanation. The community is quite interested in the tax issues. So the question is, and it goes to, to Justin to start. Do you support Proposition 15, which proposes to raise taxes on commercial properties? And the second part of the question is, do you support Measure X, the county's half-cent sales tax proposal?
I'm just not a no, I'm a heck no on both of these. Right now, it is exactly the opposite time in order to raise taxes on businesses which will just get passed down to individuals, especially those individuals that are at the lower end of the spectrum. I was on the, the chamber meeting where the advocate for Proposition X came on and even she does not believe that the proposition will pass. And even she believes this will add additional pressure to those individuals to even pay things like their property taxes. This is the wrong time to do both of these.
Kevin, do you support Proposition 15, which proposes to raise taxes on commercial properties? And do you support Measure X, the county's half-cent sales tax proposal?
I'm concerned about Prop 15 because the, the $3 million limit that allows businesses to be, to be taxed more for the property tax would actually hit hardest in our local business community. They would pass down that property tax increase to their tenants who can least afford right now, could actually push them over into not being able to stay in business. As far as Measure X, I support that because that will go toward paying for 24/7 mental health crisis responses.
Cindy, do you support Proposition 15, which proposes to raise taxes on commercial properties? Do you support Measure X, the county's half-cent sales tax proposal?
Yes, and I think this is one of those questions, take some context. Prop 15 has some flaws to it. There's no such thing as a building in Walnut Creek that's less than $3 million. And 95% of the tax gets passed through the tenants in Walnut Creek. So it would have a real impact on our businesses here in town. However, we also have school districts that are dramatically underfunded and trying to do distance learning. So we've got to figure that out. I do not like initiatives because they tend to be one-sided.
Michael, do you support Proposition 15, which proposes to raise taxes on commercial properties? Do you support Measure X, the county's half-cent sales tax proposal?
Cindy alluded to it. There are definitely some challenges right now in the world of education. I'm a teacher myself. And so I'm very attuned to the challenges that educators face. My mom, for example, was a teacher in Vallejo for 26 years. And so I'm, you know, intimately familiar with the problems that especially low-income districts are dealing with. So yes, I do support Prop 15 strongly. I generally do not support regressive taxes like sales tax increases, so I would not be in support of Measure X.
Luella, do you support Proposition 15, which proposes to raise taxes on commercial properties? Do you support Measure X, the county's half-cent sales tax proposal?
Just start by saying on Proposition 15 that I believe that our property tax system needs improvement in so many ways. I just don't think this is it. It winds up being a regressive tax because it, of course, passes right through to the consumers. The county sales tax is a different story, however, because it's going to pay for services that most help the people who need them. And the funds are going to come from the people who consume most, so it's balanced.
Curtis, do you support Proposition 15, which proposes to raise taxes on commercial properties? Do you support Measure X, the county's half-cent sales tax proposal?
Taxation is always a bitter pill, bitter pill to swallow. However, I believe Proposition 15 is, the, the biggest issue with that is timing. In this era, right now, it's, it looks, it looks horrific. However, over the long term, I think it's vital that we find a way to enhance the funding to, that, that Prop 15 will assist with. And so I, I, I support both.
Lauren, do you support Proposition 15, which proposes to raise taxes on commercial properties? Do you support Measure X, the county's half-cent sales tax proposal?
So as most people here have said, now is a difficult time to be raising taxes. At the same time, especially with Prop 15, education is, is severely underfunded and needs, it, it needs more. And so I am, I am in support of Prop 15 because we need to support school funding because it's only going to get worse from before it gets better. Does that make sense?
And Haley, do you support Proposition 15, which proposes to raise taxes on commercial properties? Do you support Measure X, the county's half-cent sales tax proposal?
So I'm going to start with Measure X. I do not support necessarily, obviously need to do a little more research, but half-cent sales tax, I think that is kind of a lazy way to fund things. And I know that we're obviously in a place that we need more funding coming in, but also I think that we really could take a harder look at where we're spending funding. In terms of Prop 15, I'd have to look further into it to, to learn more and to give you a stance.
All right, thank you. We're going to move on to another question. It requires a, or allows for, excuse me, a 30-second response. And we are going to start with Michael. And the question is, what is your reaction to the statement, Black Lives Matter? Not the organization, but the statement.
Black Lives Matter. Black Lives Matter, absolutely. I agree. And it happens to be what is animating my campaign. It's the central premise of my campaign. What got me into this is my disappointment with how a current city, city council responded to Black Lives Matter protests on June 1st. Sorry, my cats are playing with my stuff. That is what brought me into this campaign, is I came in through the protest movement. And so Black Lives Matter is central to our campaign, our policy and our vision for the city.
And Justin, the question is, what is your reaction to the statement, Black Lives Matter? Not the organization, just the statement.
Just like Mr. Sampson said, Black Lives Matter. Mr. Wilk and I have, have had the pleasure of attending, I think, all of the major Black Lives Matter and Justice for Miles Hall protests in here in Walnut Creek. And it's been very heartwarming and interesting to listen to those individuals. I had the courage to get up and speak about their, their issues in our community. And I'm proud to be on the public safety subcommittee, addressing many of the issues in which they, they are brought up.
Kevin, what is your reaction to the statement, Black Lives Matter? Not the organization, just the statement.
Yeah. Again, Black Lives Matter is important. I mean, we've got issues where black, black men especially are being killed in the street by police unwantedly. It's just, it, it, we see our beatings every single week, it seems.
It's just, we see our beatings every single week, it seems. Black Lives Matter is something that is important to me, having grown up in minority areas. And I liken it to a statement I heard about if there is a house on fire on the block, you put that fire out on the, on the block. You don't have to spray all the houses. Black lives do matter.
And Luella, what is your reaction to the statement, Black Lives Matter? Not the organization, just the statement?
Understood. The black lives do matter, and I'm desperately upset about how in the recent years, black lives have been subjected to terrible outcomes, not just by the police, but by citizens. It is wrong, and, and I fought for civil rights when they were a way to support black people. I believe to my heart that we need to fix this racial problem in our country.
Curtis, what is your reaction to the statement, Black Lives Matter? Not the organization, just the statement?
Absolutely, they do. I'm living a black life. I'm raising two black lives. I'm the youngest with seven black lives. I was raised by two black lives that were born in the 30s in the deep south. So they intimately understand what it is to live in a world where people think black lives don't matter. And I would say that when I say Black Lives Matter, if the response that you give is all lives matter, I would say, I agree. As long as you can guarantee that when you say all lives, you include black lives. And with that statement, there is no way that I'm wrong in saying Black Lives Matter.
Thank you. Lauren, what is your reaction to the statement, Black Lives Matter? Not the organization, just the statement?
Yes, black lives matter. I am a black life. I believe I matter. I believe that all human lives have intrinsic value, but specifically, the focus needs to be on black lives and the fact that they matter because to so many people, they don't. And it's unfortunate to know that, and it's unfortunate to feel that, but it is also so nice to know that there are people in the community who share that sentiment. And so, black lives matter, and thank you for everybody who believes that, because they do.
All right. Haley, what is your reaction to the statement, Black Lives Matter? Not the organization, just the statement?
I also believe black lives matter. I think it's so important, especially addressing this in the city of Walnut Creek, where they killed a black life, Miles Hall. I think it's so important that we're not just saying it as a platitude or something that's performative, but that we're making real change behind that. I've been to the protests, or a handful of them, out here in Walnut Creek to hear the community, and there are a number of black and other people of color in our community who don't feel safe and tell us that. Experienced racism from our police officers and other people of our communities, and I think it's important to note that.
And Cindy, what is your reaction to the statement, Black Lives Matter? Not the organization, just the statement?
You know, as a kid growing up in Stockton, I saw it up close and personal. As a member of a multiracial family, I see it continue to this day. We need to have the difficult conversation about police and race, and it's something that is truly important in our community and in our country today.
Thank you. We are now going to move on to another question that requires a 30-second, I'll say it differently, that allows a 30-second response. And we're going to start off with Cindy again. Finished with her and starting with her. Shopper parking in Concord and neighboring communities is free, and Walnut Creek charges for parking. Are you concerned about this? And if so, what would you do?
Yeah, it wouldn't be Walnut Creek if we didn't have a parking question. We need to work to make sure that people understand the concept of park once and walk. We have the great new garage at Broadway Plaza, which I was responsible as part of the Broadway Plaza remodel. That lets you park for three hours. You could do a lot of shopping in your three hours for free. We need to work at better signage. We need to work at helping people find the parking spots. We need to work at making sure that private garage spots are also available.
Luella, shopper parking in Concord and neighboring communities is free, and Walnut Creek charges for parking. Are you concerned about this? And if so, what would you do?
Thank you. I'm absolutely, totally sensitive to the fact that everybody wants to park right in front of the store or the restaurant that they want to go to, and then they want to have unlimited time. I'm also very aware of the fact that the restaurants and stores require turnover. So it's really important that we encourage people to put reasonable time limits on what they do. There's lots of parking in Walnut Creek. There are city garages, company garages. Walk.
All right, thank you. Haley, shopper parking in Concord and neighboring communities is free, and Walnut Creek charges for parking. Are you concerned about this? And if so, what would you do?
Yes and no. I think everyone's kind of pointed out that, I know there's a lot of frustration because people want to park right in front of a store, but Walnut Creek actually has a lot of parking in terms of the garages and in terms of other places over, like by Ross and Sunrise Bistro, where they aren't charged. So there are a lot of spaces that aren't charged for. Also, our parking fund is a revenue stream for us to provide services and other things. So I think that that's important as well.
Thank you. Justin, shopping parking in Concord and neighboring communities is free, and Walnut Creek charges for parking. Are you concerned about this? And if so, what would you do?
I think, first we, thank you, Matt. First, we must realize that having a parking problem is not always a bad thing. This means that Walnut Creek is successful, and it's someplace that people want to go. That's not always true in our neighboring communities. What we need to do is actually implement a full-scale parking management program that is not run and micromanaged from the council, staff-run. And I believe to this day, I'm the only council member that is actually advocating for this path. And we must fix the policies that have allowed the council majority to make the parking situation here in Walnut Creek much, much worse.
Curtis, shopper parking in Concord and neighboring communities is free, and Walnut Creek charges for parking. Are you concerned about this? And if so, what would you do?
I'm not especially concerned about the comparison between the neighboring communities and Walnut Creek with us having a charging for parking. Walnut Creek is a destination. People come here specifically to engage in our, in our businesses. And it's also a revenue stream. So I think we should take, continue to take advantage of that. Also, we need to find ways to drive people to the parking that is available. Perhaps we have, we increase a discount program where if you park in one of our garages, you get discounts at different businesses.
Right. And Kevin, shopper parking in Concord and neighboring communities is free, and Walnut Creek charges for parking. Are you concerned about this? And if so, what would you do?
I wouldn't say concern is the right word. We've got 10,000 parking spots that are in Walnut Creek. We just have to make sure that people know where all of these spots are, whether they're in garages where they can park free for the first hour, or whether they're in the purple poles where they can park for about half the price they would in the core area downtown, right in front of businesses. It's more of a turnover issue. If we don't charge, then they're filled up by employees. And in fact, we have the business community imploring us to charge parking again in the middle of the COVID shutdown because customers could not park anywhere downtown.
And Michael, shopper parking in Concord and neighboring communities is free, and Walnut Creek charges for parking. Are you concerned about this? And if so, what would you do?
No, I'm not particularly concerned. As a resident of Walnut Creek, me personally, I can count on one hand the number of times I've had trouble finding free and available parking in Walnut Creek. There's plenty of garages, and most of them offer free parking for a certain amount of time. So I'm not too worried about that. I'm more concerned, oh, and of course, it is a revenue stream for the city, so we don't want to lose that. I'm more concerned with getting people out of their cars to begin with and improving public transit, so people don't even need to take the car to these businesses.
All right, we're going to move on to another question with a 30-second response. And we'll start with Kevin. And where do you stand on raising building height limits in designated areas, including downtown?
Right. So if we're talking about Measure A, obviously, that's a voter-approved initiative. And the feeling I have regarding Measure A is that if it's a specifically proposed project in an area that makes sense, I would be in favor of that support of raising the height limits for that particular project. For example, a large employer that may want to be in the north downtown area that would want a 200-deck operation for technology might require a couple of extra stories, and that should be able to be voters, and I would support something like that.
Justin, where do you stand on raising building height limits in designated areas, including downtown?
Like, I'm not going to go repeat what Kevin said, because I agree with him. This is really a voter, a voter issue. If the community, whether it's the business community or individuals throughout Walnut Creek, feel that they want to address what's going on with the height limit issue, that it's, it's going to be a community-driven issue. I don't think there's an appetite on the council, at least three votes, in order to put this out to the public. However, I think that height limits do cause problems in development where there are areas in the city where you can have a six-story next to a two-story. Those issues definitely need to be addressed and studied.
All right. Luella, where do you stand on raising building height limits in designated areas, including downtown?
Measure A was approved in 1985, and it came from a reaction of 10 years of office development downtown. Only the voters can change Measure A. So why not just put it on the ballot? Well, unless there's a compelling reason, I believe this will fail. So what is the compelling reason, and how do we get it? We start a conversation with all the stakeholders in the community and get them behind the idea, whether it's for one building or all.
All right. Haley, where do you stand on raising building height limits in designated areas, including downtown?
Yeah, I think this has been alluded to everyone who's answered so far. I don't think you can say a blanket yes or no statement without considering the area, the current zoning, and the impact it would have on local businesses. I think that we're going to have to start getting creative in terms of providing spaces where we're not getting rid of our open space, but where we're still providing business spaces and housing. So it really does depend on the situation and the location.
Curtis, where do you stand on raising building height limits in designated areas, including downtown?
I actually think that Mayor Haskins gave an excellent answer. This is a collaborative effort between the community. I think it's important that not only would you have businesses making this decision, but I think you need to ensure that families and other members of the community have an opportunity to chime in on this. Because raising height limits also affects the landscape, the thing that draws people to the city in the first place. And we don't want to negatively affect that. So it's important that we ensure that everyone has a say.
Michael, where do you stand on raising building height limits in designated areas, including downtown? You're on?
Okay, sorry, I needed to be unmuted. So I hope, I wonder if we can get the clock to restart? But maybe not.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So I think a lot of people are saying, you know, correctly, that this is an issue that is going to go to the voters, and so I'm not going to make a comment on it. I disagree with that approach. I think people are here to see what you, what you feel about stuff. So I would approve such a, such a measure. I do think that those types of initiatives are a long time coming. Of course, we need to, you know, decide based on where it is. So I wouldn't want, you know, 150-foot height limit in the middle of the suburbs. And we need to pick our spots more carefully. But as a part of our broader efforts to densify our cities, we need to consider building it up.
Cindy, where do you stand on raising building height limits in designated areas, including downtown?
You know, this is a long conversation we've been having in this city. And in my time on the Planning Commission, I have seen a couple of projects that could have been significantly improved if we had had the ability to give them additional height. But it's a community conversation. We're going to have to look at the public benefit. We're going to have to look at the impact on views. We're going to have to look at the impact on parking and traffic. And it is ultimately up to the voters to decide if it's something they want to entertain.
Got it. All right. Lauren, where do you stand on raising building height limits in designated areas, including downtown?
As has been said before, I think that it is very much a community issue. Personally, for me, I wouldn't be opposed to it in certain spaces because I don't want urban sprawl to happen. I'd rather us not develop out into our open spaces. And so the only remaining direction is up, but it would have to be pretty carefully considered because, as Curtis said, a lot of Walnut Creek is about the view, is about the landscape. And so we want to do that in a way that is cognizant of that.
We're going to move into another series of questions that, with a 30-second response. We're plumbing a little bit of ground. Some of this we've gone over, but it's an important issue that a number of people in the community have raised. So I'm going to ask this next question. And Lauren is first to go. Would you support defunding police and/or reallocation of funds to mental health services and/or other programs? Please explain how your decision might impact police services to businesses.
Yes, I am in favor of defunding the police and reallocating those resources to people who are better equipped to deal with certain situations. Something that I very staunchly believe is police are not mental health professionals, and so they shouldn't be made to do a job they're not trained for. That's not fair to them, and it's not fair to the people they're servicing. I don't anticipate that it would negatively affect businesses in the area because it would give the police more time to focus on actual police issues. Yeah.
Kevin, would you support defunding the police and/or reallocation of funds to mental health services and/or other programs? Please explain how your decision might impact police services to businesses.
Yeah. I think when we're talking defund, if it sounds like it's 50% funding of what the police currently have, no. We did reduce funding by the police department by a million dollars this last year, but it's not something that we can substitute and put somewhere else. It's additive. So to have 24/7 mental health crisis responses, or to have social workers or homeless outreach teams, for example, they still need accompanying police in many cases. We hear this from communities that use this kind of, that uses this kind of method all over the country.
Haley, would you support defunding the police and/or reallocation of funds to mental health services and/or other programs? Please explain how your decision might impact police services to businesses.
I do. I do support it. I don't think the term defund, I think the term defund the police gets a bad rap because a lot of people don't know what it means, or it gets politicized. But the concept of defunding is just, it's not getting rid of police altogether. It's, for example, the Walnut Creek police have two positions, is my understanding, that address homeless services. The funding for those two positions can be moved elsewhere. So I think that there's a number of cases where police are overwhelmed, and we don't need a police officer with a gun to handle a number of the services that they provide right now.
Cindy, would you support defunding the police and/or reallocation of funds to mental health services and/or other programs? Please explain how your decision might impact police services to businesses.
Well, police serve an important public safety function in our community, and they need the training, the resources, the transparency, and the accountability to keep all of the members of our society safe. They're also not the answer to every situation, and we need to look at the alternative response for community members in mental health crisis, where trained but unarmed professionals can intervene and mediate for better outcomes. Then we need to define and fund those roles, working through the budget process. I'm not going to say that there's any sacred cows in the process, but we need to work it out through that process.
Justin, would you support defunding and/or reallocation of the police and/or reallocation of funds to mental health services and/or other programs? Please explain how your decision might impact police services to businesses.
So as it relates to the first part of that question, the defunding the police, no. I've been a very vocal, and I believe really the only proponent on, at least vocally, on the council of denouncing this type of effort. I think this will only lead to greater problems in our community, whether it's Walnut Creek or broader, than it would, than it would achieve. But having said that, I've taken a leadership role, not only on the council, but in the Public Safety Subcommittee, addressing many of the issues that I think have some credence, whether it's greater transparency, or policy review, de-escalation, and additional training that council has funded those efforts.
Michael, would you support defunding the police and/or reallocation of funds to mental health services and/or other programs? Please explain how your decision might impact police services to businesses.
I wish I had 30 minutes to answer this question instead of 30 seconds. I wish I had 30 minutes to answer this question instead of 30 seconds. The short answer is yes, I would support defunding the police and reallocating those funds towards community needs. Agreeing with Haley, saying that the word defund gets a bad rep and people should consider looking more deeply into what the policy means. I want to use this time to disagree very strongly with Kevin Wilk. First of all, our police funding has been increased compared to last year by 1.3 million dollars and he was a part of that effort. And in terms of services, it is not additive. We can take responsibilities that are currently tasked to the police and the commensurate funding away from them and give them to new departments.
Luella, would you support defunding the police and/or reallocation of funds to mental health services and/or other programs? Please explain how your decision might impact police services to businesses.
I'm going to answer it a little differently. Everybody wants a safe community and I'm committed to making this community safe for everyone. As mayor, I'm leading an effort to build a coalition of cities, as I said before, and that isn't coming out of the police budget. That's coming out of other funds. We're augmenting the training of our police to respond to people's interest. I'm going to correct Mike, Michael, that Trinity did request that we have the police involvement in the homeless situation.
All right. And Curtis, would you support defunding the police and/or reallocation of funds to mental health services and/or other programs? Please explain how your decision might impact police services to businesses.
I really don't like the phrase defund the police that used by opponents to, to belittle and destroy the valid argument that a, that budget evaluation and the evaluation of services by police is, is a vital thing to do. I do not support the punitive action of punishing the police departments by randomly cutting their budgets. That's not something I support, but I do support taking a look at their budgets and services and seeing if there's a way to better use that.
Another question which allows for a 30 second response, kind of a fun one. Let's see how we do with this. And Curtis, right back at you on this one. What is your proudest public accomplishment?
Proudest public accomplishment? You, you know, it's, I would have to say that this moment, it makes me proud. And the reason it makes me proud is because my children have an opportunity to see their father stepping up outside of his comfort zone to do something that he strongly believes is good, not just for himself, but for the community as a whole. And this is something that I think will last with them for their entire lives and, and hopefully make them better people. So I'm really proud of what I'm doing right now.
What is your proudest public accomplishment?
Proudest public accomplishment? For me, it's a combination of right now, standing here, sitting here, I guess, doing this. And also I'm serving on the civil grand jury. For those of you who don't know, it's a group of 19 local citizens. They evaluate, research, provide recommendations, do interviews, and then provide reports and recommendations for improvement for local city entities to hold them accountable. And when those reports came out, that was one of my proudest public moments is a year of, you know, 20 to 30 hours a week, for not a lot of money, doing that research and having that come out and make a positive impact, holding local governance accountable.
What is your proudest public accomplishment?
Okay, this is not my proudest, but it's my best published accomplishment. Back in the early 90s, I oversaw the endangered species permits for the state of California. And Contra Costa Water District approached us about permitting their new reservoir that they wanted to build. And we had not permitted a reservoir in decades. We're at the end of a horrible drought. Species numbers in the Delta had dropped dramatically. But we hammered it out. We sat down, we worked it out, we came up with interest-based negotiation and came up with something really great. And on the day we issued the last permits, the project manager for Contra Costa Water District came up, sat down next to me and asked me to lunch. And we're going to be celebrating our 25th wedding anniversary this year.
What is your proudest public accomplishment?
Certainly while being on the city council, my number one is combating climate change, being a leading voice for combating climate change on the city council. And having 100% clean energy in all city-owned buildings is one of the ones that I'm most proud of. Secondly, I would say that taking the lead on raising the pride flag for the first time in Walnut Creek and being the leading voice on that, that was, I take a lot of pride in that as well. I could continue to go on, but those are certainly in the top two.
Thank you. Luella, what is your proudest public accomplishment?
Thank you. It isn't, I don't have one proud accomplishment. It's, it's showing up for council every day. It is finding new ways to help people. It's being members, a member of a nonprofit board for years and years and years and watching it grow and be better. It's, it's actually one of my proudest accomplishments, public or otherwise, is raising my son. It is, it is so many things. And I, I just, I can only appreciate them, appreciate it.
What is your proudest public accomplishment?
I can immediately think of two. And one of them, I think, is doing this because if you haven't caught on, I'm very nervous. I'm a little afraid, but I'm doing it. My, my whole motto through this whole thing, it has been, be scared, but do it anyway. And so I think that this, and then in high school, just, just a fun thing, me and my friends ran an anime convention out of Antioch High. It's still running to this day. And being a part of that is something I will treasure forever.
What is your proudest public accomplishment?
I would say my proudest accomplishment would be the activism that I've been engaged with over the past few months. So I was part of the group of protesters that protested in Walnut Creek on June 1st. I was one of the protesters that went to the freeway and blocked traffic there. I was very proud of that. I'm proud of the comments that I've been making at city council meetings since that day. Again, I mentioned I was, I've been extremely disappointed by the current city council and how they run things. And I've been leading the daily protests in front of Walnut Creek City Hall. We protest every day from 12 to 1. I've been leading that. And as a result of those efforts, I've been endorsed by Tom Hall, which is something I'm very proud of.
And Justin, what is your proudest public accomplishment?
Everyone else chose more than one, so I'll do the same thing. From a policy perspective, seeing the fruits of my advocacy and leadership out in the Shadlands has been, has been fantastic. My leadership on implementation of Prop 65. And then definitely since what drove me to politics is I'm finally seeing actual, some of my fiscal policies implemented after years of being told that it'd be impossible here, specifically zero-based budgeting. And then of course, from a personal perspective, seeing my kids want to get involved in, in student government at their school has, has definitely been almost brought tears to my eyes when they told me about it.
And we're going to go to our last question until we get into audience questions. And this is actually kind of a fun one as well. And it allows for a 30 second response. And the first one to answer would be Haley. And the question is, as a council member, if you received a $1 million grant for the community, how would you spend it?
You know, if it was today, I'd spend it getting people inside. I think right now we see that there is a homeless population that is sitting here, you know, when we're all sitting in our houses, being covered in ash and unhealthy air quality. And I think that there is an immediate need to get funding for short-term temporary emergency housing, additional to what we provide currently, as well as transitional housing.
Right. And now Luella, as a council member, if you received a million dollar grant for the community, how would you spend it?
Oh, the need is so large and $1 million is so small compared to what we need to spend it on. I would immediately, because it's one of the things that I'm focused on now, is apply it to our rebound budget so that we could help businesses adjust to the wintering and so that we could encourage enough downtown people to come and enjoy what we have downtown. Even now, fill up the restaurants, go to the stores.
Lauren, as a council member, if you received a million dollar grant for the community, how would you spend it?
A lot like Haley, if, if I were to get it right now, getting homeless people out of the smoke. Yeah, that's, it's, it's rough. It's, it's not good. So if I could get them transitional housing, if I could get them a safe, covered place to stay, that is where that money would go immediately currently.
Thank you. Curtis, as a council member, if you receive, are we timewise, we want to make sure we don't cheat you out of your 30 seconds. Okay. As a council member, if you received a million dollar grant for the community, how would you spend it?
Wow, it's, it sounds like a lot, but it's really not, not much. I would take a small portion of that and create a, this grassroots program where we can engage the youth. I made a promise to high school students that I would engage them and give them some understanding in this demystifying public service. I would take a portion of that, a significant portion of it, and probably go directly to the Trinity Center and say, hey, how can we use this to help these homeless people that are out here exposed? And then see if there's, there's an opportunity to use the rest for businesses.
Justin, as a council member, if you received a million dollar grant for the community, how would you spend it?
Like everyone else, a million dollars doesn't go, go far these days. However, with someone, and I've told this story multiple times, as someone that has had multiple members in my family with mental health issues, lifelong mental health issues, homelessness issues, it's a, it's very clear that mental health is very underfunded in our community and really in our country. So whatever a million dollars can get in order to provide services and hopefully educate the community and destigmatize the mental health issues would go a long way, I think, for a million dollars.
Cindy, as a council member, if you received a million dollar grant for the community, how would you spend it?
Trinity Center came about because somebody left the city $250,000. It wasn't a lot, but they went out and found a strong advocate and worked it and moved it forward. We could do the same thing with that million dollars on mental health because that's a big part of homelessness. It's a big part of our police response problem. And we can take a million dollars and we can begin to invest in that alternative response that we all really want to see.
Michael, as a council member, if you received a million dollar grant for the community, how would you spend it?
I would spend it on 24/7 mental health crisis, non-police mobile response. I think we're talking about a million dollars, a million dollars can go a long way in that specific avenue towards creating that new response. Miles Hall was killed by the police when he was going through a mental health crisis. And so we owe it to Miles Hall and we owe it to his family and we owe it to ourselves to ensure that something like that can never happen in Walnut Creek again.
And Kevin, as a council member, if you received a million dollar grant for the community, how would you spend it?
Well, I suppose I'll round it up on the last few. 24/7 mental health crisis response. I've been talking about this on the city council for months now. I've spoken with individual board of supervisors at county supervisors and I've spoken at board meetings as well at the county supervisors. This would be excellent seed money to start that. It would help get Walnut Creek off on the right foot. We could start something that would be a much smaller program, but it would, the million dollars would help toward that and then build into the larger county program that I've been advocating for. That would go a long way in this instance.
Thank you. We are going to have some 30 second responses to some questions that we've received from the audience. And we're going to start with one that is something that's been asked many, many times and was asked two years ago is something. And here is the question and we'll go to Cindy. In recent years, a number of new apartment buildings have been constructed and some people feel the community character is changing from suburban to urban, thereby stressing existing infrastructures like roads, schools, police, et cetera. Do you agree or disagree? And what would you propose to do over the next 10 years?
Well, when we came up with our general plan, we have to plan for a certain amount of growth in housing. That's how, if we don't do that, that exacerbates the housing jobs imbalance and the housing crisis. The general plan calls for that development to go in downtown with higher density and leave the single-family neighborhoods as they are with some minor modifications. When I was on the planning commission, when we were looking at new projects downtown, we looked at, do they respect the character of Walnut Creek, traffic-wise?
Haley, in recent years, a number of new apartment buildings have been constructed and some people feel the community character is changing from suburban to urban, thereby stressing existing infrastructures like roads, schools, police, et cetera. Do you agree or disagree? And what would you propose to do over the next 10 years?
I disagree a little bit. I think there, there's some loaded wording behind that question, maybe that I don't think people are even realizing comes out in the worry about urbanizing a suburban area. I think that I don't, for example, in the woodlands, right? I grew up in the woodlands. I don't know that that's a great place to put apartments. But Shadlands, for example, they're building more apartments there. And I think that's a great idea as long as, as Cindy was alluding to before she got cut off, the, the traffic and the walkability and those things are.
Kevin, in recent years, a number of new apartment buildings have been constructed and some people feel the community character is changing from suburban to urban, thereby stressing existing infrastructure like roads, schools, police, et cetera. Do you agree or disagree? And what would you propose to do over the next 10 years?
Well, we've made a concerted effort to ensure that apartment buildings are built downtown where there's available walking to public transit, being able to walk downtown and, and just walking to bar as well, where they don't have to impact the roads. The problem with it being built in the suburb areas, which we have, we have purposely not done is because there isn't the infrastructure and the job density to be able to house them. And that's been the problem. We have a, a very big problem with enough, or too much demand and.
Lauren, in recent years, a number of new apartment buildings have been constructed and some people feel the community character is changing from suburban to urban, thereby stressing existing infrastructures like roads, schools, police, et cetera. Do you agree or disagree? And what would you propose to do over the next 10 years?
I think that the city has become more modern in the last 10 years, but I wouldn't say it's a problem. I wouldn't say that it's becoming more urban than suburban because as others have stated, largely the neighborhood areas aren't being developed and it's a lot downtown. And I, I do think that there are times when downtown can be a little unwieldy to navigate. But I don't think that it is a problem that is unmanageable and I don't see it manageable in the future.
Luella, in recent years, a number of new apartment buildings have been constructed and some people feel the community character is changing from suburban to urban, thereby stressing existing infrastructures like roads, schools, police, et cetera. Do you agree or disagree? And what would you propose to do over the next 10 years?
Well, first of all, we are under a general plan that requires that most of the housing now be structured and downtown because of the near, nearness to transportation. They are actually more efficient in terms of use of land and our resources, less water and less other things. So they're more efficient. Change brings stress and we can adapt to the stress and we can make this a warm, comfortable place for all to live.
Justin, in recent years, a number of new apartment buildings have been constructed and some people feel the community character is changing from suburban to urban, thereby stressing existing infrastructures like roads, schools, police, et cetera. Do you agree or disagree? And what would you propose to do over the next 10 years?
I agree that it is changing. We've always been changing. We formed a paved main street and we've gone from one road to what we are today. This council has focused our development efforts primarily in our downtown areas so that we can leave the areas not in our downtown to single-family residents, most of them. And that is our vision here for, for the next few decades. As it relates to our schools, as a member of the public education subcommittee, I can tell you we're in direct contact with our school to make sure that development will not have any adverse impacts. And as of now, they have not.
We are. Michael, in recent years, a number of new apartment buildings have been constructed and some people feel the community character is changing from suburban to urban, thereby stressing existing infrastructures like roads, schools, police, et cetera. Do you agree or disagree? And what would you propose to do over the next 10 years?
I actually don't believe that urbanizing a place like Walnut Creek is a problem. I believe that the 20th century suburb is not sustainable in the 21st century. That we need to urbanize Walnut Creek. We've, we've talked already about how a lot of that effort is happening downtown. But I actually do believe that we need to make zoning changes to allow for gentle density in other zones as well. as well. I don't believe that single-family zoning should be something that would prioritize in the 21st century. We need to improve public transit so that roads and other infrastructure don't get impacted by these improvements.
And Curtis, "In recent years, a number of new apartment buildings have been constructed and some people feel the community character is changing from suburban to urban, thereby stressing existing infrastructures like roads, schools, police, et cetera. Do you agree or disagree? And what would you propose to do over the next 10 years?"
I agree. And I hear it from community members all the time who talk about the new developments that are happening. I think what we need to do is be honest with ourselves. Although we built these apartment complexes downtown with the expectation that the single-family homes would be where the families live, we need, I think we need to understand that downtown is going to become the new single-family location. We will have families there. There will be an impact to the infrastructure around and we need to take time to find solutions to our traffic problems.
We're going to move into another question, a little bit of a hot button question that audiences are interested in. Excuse me. And we will start with Curtis. "Are you in favor of lifting the prohibition on cannabis commercial businesses, specifically the licensing of a cannabis dispensary in Walnut Creek?"
That is a hot button question. I would say, so yes, I am in favor of that. However, I think it's important to understand the implications of doing so. Although I don't like the villainization of cannabis, I think it's important to understand how that will change the perception of people that come to our business area. So we need to ensure that these places are designed with that in mind.
Michael, "Are you in favor of lifting the prohibition on cannabis commercial businesses, specifically the licensing of a cannabis dispensary in Walnut Creek?"
I am. I think it's important to recognize that the issue of, you know, the war on drugs has been an issue that has disproportionately impacted black and brown people. And so for a largely white community like Walnut Creek to continue to push that issue down, there are some racial implications there. I also think it's worth noting that if you live in Walnut Creek, if you want to get marijuana, you can very easily. It gets delivered to your door. So people are already getting marijuana. I don't oppose opening a storefront, just making sure that it's not maybe in our downtown or maybe in a more discreet area.
Cindy, "Are you in favor of lifting the prohibition on cannabis commercial businesses, specifically the licensing of a cannabis dispensary in Walnut Creek?"
Okay. Two years ago, when we considered this on the planning commission, we adopted the ordinance that allowed two commercial delivery services for medical. And we said, we will wait and see how this works. On retail use, I think it is time to review the current program to determine what the impacts have been on human health and safety and look at our neighboring jurisdictions to see what lessons they've learned and whether or not they've been able to come up with a workable program. We've got, and then we would have to go through and make sure that we work with our faith communities, preschools and schools to make sure it's in appropriate locations if we do decide to proceed.
And Haley, "Are you in favor of lifting the prohibition on cannabis commercial businesses, specifically the licensing of a cannabis dispensary in Walnut Creek?"
I am. I think certainly it needs to go to the communities to see their comfort level, but quite frankly, as someone who has MS and multiple dual autoimmune diseases, I'm comfortable telling you that I use cannabis medicinally sometimes to ease my pain. And I don't think that there should be this huge stigma with it being legal. I think especially in a time right now where we're hurting from our sales tax and like Michael said, users, people are using it in Walnut Creek anyway, that we should as a community be able to benefit from the sales of it.
Kevin, "Are you in favor of lifting the prohibition on cannabis commercial businesses, specifically the licensing of a cannabis dispensary in Walnut Creek?"
Well, three years ago, when we first brought this up, we approved being able to have delivery here and all means of being able to acquire cannabis except a retail location. We had said, and I said at the time, I want to see what happens with other cities. What's the data that comes in? Should it be something that is in a shopping center? Should it be on the outskirts of town? Should it be closer where there's more foot traffic? Or should it be in an industrial area? So I'm not opposed to having a dispensary at all. I would just like to see what the data is from our neighboring cities.
Justin, "Are you in favor of lifting the prohibition on cannabis commercial businesses, specifically the licensing of a cannabis dispensary in Walnut Creek?"
Yes, I am. I was the leading proponent of implementing everything Prop 65 related when it came through council. And I just want to note that so is the public. In 2016, 98% of the people voted for one way or another a Prop 65. Only 59% voted for a council member. They're more interested in marijuana than they were in any of us. We did a survey subsequent to that because many on the council thought that individuals in Walnut Creek didn't know what was in it. And even the public said to implement the entire thing. I think it's far too late. We should be doing it today.
Curtis, "Are you in favor of lifting the prohibition on cannabis commercial businesses, specifically the licensing of a cannabis dispensary in Walnut Creek?"
I would love to take another 30 seconds, but I already said that I am in favor.
And thanks. We can use the time. Luella, "Are you in favor of lifting the prohibition on cannabis commercial businesses, specifically the licensing of a cannabis dispensary in Walnut Creek?"
I am in favor of looking at it. I don't know all the implications. I do know you can get marijuana anywhere you want it. I also know that before it was legal, you could get marijuana pretty much anywhere you wanted it. So I don't know that making it more convenient is necessary. And it certainly has proven that they haven't raised the sales tax or been the boon to our taxing system and just to make their kind of a drag on it. So I'm not opposed, but I think it needs to be looked at carefully.
And Lauren, "Are you in favor of lifting the prohibition on cannabis commercial businesses, specifically the licensing of a cannabis dispensary in Walnut Creek?"
Yes, I am. I think definitely care needs to be taken with where it's located, but I think that having a dispensary in Walnut Creek would be a very helpful service to a fair number of people. I know that you can get it via delivery, but at the same time, it'd be convenient to have a storefront. So yeah, I think that that's certainly something that wouldn't be a detriment to the community. You just have to make sure that it is placed somewhere with care.
All right, and thank you for that. We are now at the point, so there are a number of questions, but for timing purposes, we're going to end those questions. And we are at the point of candidate closing statements. And, or we call them, excuse me, I'm a lawyer, I call them closing statements or arguments. It's, how about we call it candidate summaries? And these summaries are for one minute and we will start with Lauren.
All right. Thank you for, oh, there we go. So I first wanted to start by saying thank you to the chamber for hosting this forum. Thank you to everyone who has attended and to the other candidates for being here with me today, to everyone watching and listening. I hope that you will consider giving me your vote. I am a candidate that very much wants to hear your voice and wants to be a representative for Walnut Creek. I want to make sure that everyone feels heard and feels seen. I want to make sure that the homeless population in Walnut Creek can be taken care of, can have year-round housing. I want to defund the police so that we can reallocate those funds to other services that the police should not have to deal with because it is not their job. And I want to see more funding go into community services like the library, like arts and rec so that the city can be the best that it can be. Thank you very much and have a lovely rest of your day.
Thank you. Haley.
Hi. Like everyone else, I'm sure will do, I want to first thank the chamber for putting on this forum and for the thought-provoking questions. Really made me think on a couple of them and I know that's the point as well as to get the community to think. I wanted to thank everyone who attended this, whether you're doing it live or you're watching this recorded a week from now or something. We are facing unprecedented times with the COVID pandemic and the resulting budget deficit and the social unrest. And I think that it is more important than ever that the city of Walnut Creek has young, passionate council members who are having their finger on the pulse of the community and have the urgency to get through these things during this difficult time. As I said in my intro, I believe that my empathy, my education in policy analysis and my experience working for the grand jury and studying budgets and government accountability would make me a great candidate. And I hope you will consider voting for me and feel free to contact me to get involved.
Cindy.
Okay. Thank you. I want to thank the chamber for hosting the event today under these really weird circumstances. I'm proud to be a member of the chamber for all these years and I appreciate what you guys have done for our city. As I prepared for today's event, I went out and talked to a bunch of my fellow small business people downtown and I have been so impressed with the grit and the resolve and the belief they have in Walnut Creek. And I think we need to honor that. We need to do all we can to support their efforts and see that Walnut Creek remains open for business. So why me? Of all the new candidates, I am the one that has done the hard work of serving on a commission. I have long experience with public service. I'm a 20-year resident, raised my kids here, helped our community, and we're otters, by the way. And I have the firsthand experience in balancing the competing issues that face our city. I have the skills and experience and ready to work on the council on day one. I think Walnut Creek deserves a council that can work together and hammer out our differences and make sound decisions. And I bring the fresh perspective and that ability to the council. Thank you.
Justin.
Thank you to the chamber for putting on this important event. In this COVID time, it is clear that we need proven leadership with a definable track record of success. Individuals with an actual vision to build an even more perfect community. Leadership in action requires a strong connection to the community, openness to new ideas and close relationships with their businesses, all of which are reflected in the broad support of individuals that have endorsed my campaign. If reelected, I will continue to provide the necessary leadership to set the table to rebuild our economy, focus on driving high-paying jobs to our community and keep us safe while focusing on the necessary changes to our safety mission. I fundamentally believe that government works best when our elected representatives are held accountable. If you have any questions, visit my website at justinwiddell.com or call or text me at the number listed on the site. I'd be honored to have earned your vote in November.
Kevin.
Thank you. Four years ago, I was honored by the residents of Walnut Creek to be elected to their city council. All my experiences here in Walnut Creek as a father, businessperson, youth sports coach, community volunteer, longtime resident, city commissioner and a council member helped guide me as I worked to help make an even better future for the diverse resident needs of Walnut Creek, one that our children and grandchildren will be proud of. I believe we can address our priorities while ensuring responsible growth, good neighborhoods, long-term fiscal health, support our businesses and our unique quality of life for all our residents and visitors. During my four years as a council member, I've actively listened and responded to various group issues in Walnut Creek. I'm honored that so many of our former city mayors and community leaders are supporting my campaign. We're in for a challenging road ahead in many ways, personally, civically, socially and economically. It will take experienced leadership to help get us there, but knowing the people of Walnut Creek, we are ready for this challenge and will accomplish it together. For more information, people can go to kevinwilkforwalnut creek dot com.
Michael.
Hello. I would like to, like everyone else, I would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for putting this event on. Really awesome event, good chance for people to see all of the candidates side by side. I'm running because like I said, I don't believe the current city council has the will, the courage or the imagination to meet this moment. There are three incumbents up for reelection this year, which are Kevin Wilk, Justin Widdell and Luella Haskew. And I believe that we should certainly try and get all three of those incumbents out of office. They've had their chance to take meaningful action in support of justice. For example, in the case of Miles Hall, it's been over a year now and very little has been done in support. And we are beginning to take modest steps towards implementing 24/7 mental health crisis response. And they're trying to take credit for that when really it's in spite of them rather than because of them that we are taking these steps now. At the same time, they've defunded libraries, the arts, crossing guards and more and keeping the police budget intact. I believe that we should not wait for higher levels of government to take action. I believe we need to take progressive, bold action now and that we can't wait for higher levels of government to do it. I believe that the injustices we witness daily are not inevitable. A better world is possible.
Curtis.
First of all, thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm glad I had the chance to share my thoughts with the community and give them an opportunity to see what each of us represents. As your councilman, I'll be open, accessible, proactive and engaging the community and increasing residents' awareness of city issues. First and foremost, I think it's important that we help businesses, support, businesses survive this pandemic phase. I support loosening restrictions, extending the rebound program and possibly leveraging parts of that permanently. I support a holistic, coordinated approach to resolving the homelessness issue. And I rely on my business background to guide me as I help Walnut Creek stabilize its budget. I promise to work hard. I'll seek community input and make sound decisions on behalf of the residents of Walnut Creek.
Thank you. And Luella.
Hi. Thank you to the chamber yet again and thank you also to the fellow council member, council candidates. It keeps us sharp to have, to live up to your expectations. I love this city. I am definitely proud of my achievements. Moving forward, however, my priorities will include rebuilding and enhancing our economy, exploring and implementing modern initiatives for public safety, revitalizing the arts, our recreation and library programs, preserving our quality of life while addressing local housing needs and ensuring that our city has a strong financial future. I have the experience, the knowledge, the stability and the passion that will move our city forward. I would be honored to have your support and if you'd like to know more about what we're accomplishing, there's a website.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much to all of the candidates. On behalf of the chamber, we are certainly very impressed, and I'll use a term that somebody already used, the grit and resolve, the thoughtfulness of all of the candidates. And I always like to say, city councils are, it's the most intimate group to work in government. It is where the boots hit the ground. It's our communities. You see the people walking on the streets, you interact with them. The issues are our issues and it's very, very important. And the chamber is certainly proud to continue this tradition of having impressive candidates such as all of you vying to lead our city. I'll give another thanks to the chamber staff, to our president, Jay Hoyer, and the staff that's all present here, working very hard to put all this together, to reach out to the community, to gather the questions. I think I said at the start of my remarks that we will provide to you questions that we weren't able to ask, but I do have to say, for the most part, you addressed the questions that were asked by the audience and certainly the original questions by the business owners of our city. So go forth. Best of luck to all of you and thank you very much for participating in this incredibly important event for the city of Walnut Creek.